If I could all call our meeting to order, I appreciate everyone being here. All of our board team members are here, that's item one, to call our meeting to order and establish a quorum. So, we appreciate everyone being here and us being able to start on time. Our next item is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Jehu Hernandez, the pastor of Solid Rock Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation. By the way, he's also a former employee of the school district. He worked for us and was the band, uh, the music choir director at Lakeview.
Yes, sir. Alright, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful today for the opportunity we have to gather together this occasion to conduct business, the business of our school district. What a great school district you allow us to be a part of, this entire community. I thank you for the men and women of this board, administrators, the campus, principals, faculty, everybody who plays such an important role, our support staff, who all played an important role in educating our children and preparing them for the future. So, we pray today that you would guide this board now and guide them in their decision-making. Grant them your wisdom, Father, as they make decisions that will position our district to move forward and position our teachers and students to be successful as they continue their education and even their personal growth. So, grant us your blessing today. We pray and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks Pastor Hernandez, we appreciate that. Our next item is our pledges. We have some great young people from Bowie Elementary School and as they come forward, I'll introduce you to them. So, go ahead, come on. We have Rosalyn Acosta, John Connel, and Sofia Orozco, and they're going to lead us in our pledges, just for everyone to stand.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank y'all. And, hang on, I told them that if any of their parents wanted to come forward and take pictures, that they're going to stand up here for a while, so y'all come on.
There you go, face that one. There you go, good job.
We really appreciate, uh, these are all 4th graders at Bowie Elementary School. Before we do our, um, our recognitions, I wanted to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelino Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. Also, welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most if not all the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelino Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals for the district, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets and personnel contracts, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to the board an opportunity to do so. I'll make certain that we give an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda this evening. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments in either of these sections would please try to limit their comments to three to four minutes, we'd appreciate it. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SEISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and I also ask as are my fellow board team members to please silence their cellphones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to the night's meeting and thank you for taking the time to join us. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. And with that being said, we're going to move to, uh, recognitions and Ms. Crutchfield's going to help us with that.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board and guests tonight. Tonight, Lee Fluger and Candace Hicks from Heritage Park of San Angelo would like to recognize their partnership with San Angelo ISD. San Angelo ISD elementary students learn about the Concho Valley's ranching history with information from the park and one of my favorite books, Hank the Cowdog.
Lanny, board, thank you very much for allowing us, as a member of the Heritage Park Committee, to tell you how much we appreciate the collaboration with the school system to be able to share with our 4th graders all through the district about ranch history and about, uh, about the history of our area. We learn from the past and we think that if they know something about ranching history, they can appreciate where they are longer term. It's, this collaboration exposes our students to technological, historical, scientific, and English language criteria during the field trips that each one of the school districts, I mean, each one of the classrooms, 4th grade classrooms, uh, come by. And we've had about 600 kids that are coming through the program, and as you see in the little brochure I've sent out, we hope to expand this program to include area schools, which would bring us up to about 3,000 students a year that will be able to go through the park and learn about our ranch history. The curriculum was a benefit from the Ranch Heritage Center at Texas Tech, that they provide that free of charge, and then the committee through foundation grants has been able to supply Hank the Cowdog books to, uh, teachers and friends and other people who might enjoy the books. Uh, it, through this curriculum, we're able to integrate children of all ages and abilities and ethnic backgrounds into this program. It assists the children in understanding realities of natural systems. It demonstrates the principles and cycles of, of life and of water, uh, water conservation, and it stimulates all kinds of natural learning cycles. Projects like Heritage Park are a, uh, are because of the generous donations of, of our community, our volunteers, and then the collaboration with the school makes it all impossible. Thanks again to the San Angelino Independent School District for allowing us to participate in this program. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Fluger, we appreciate that. Um, I'm, I'm going to take a little bit of President's privilege, I'm not sure the rest of the board members know that I'm going to do this, but maybe they'll approve it after I say it. Uh, I want to welcome our parents to tonight's meeting, uh, and our, we call everybody stakeholders. We've got parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles and lots of folks that are helping rear our children, and we appreciate y'all's attendance here this evening. You're equal partners in the education of our students, and we appreciate y'all taking the time to be here. One of the favorite things, I think I could poll everybody here this evening on our board, one of the favorite things we get to do all year is recognize students. So, we set aside time at a number of our meetings to recognize students for their accomplishments. Another really good time is when students graduate and we get to shake their hand and hand them, you know, their diploma at graduation, so there's at least a couple of times where we're able to thank our students for, for their hard work. Um, you know, there's lots of ways that the state chooses to measure success for students. I think if you sit here tonight and, and watch, you're going to have a great opportunity to understand just how many of our students are really doing great things. And, um, unfortunately, the state's decided that, um, you take a test one time a year called STAR, and how, whatever you score on that test, they define what your district is. And we're working with a consortium of districts across the state on a community-based accountability system that tries to determine what our students need to be in San Angelo and what our community expects. And I think most of y'all would agree that we expect excellence, you know, that's kind of a pursuit, and, uh, we're not happy with, uh, the grade that we got on STAR last year, but we have so many other measures for student success that, that bring a lot of pride to our board and certainly to the staff and the administration team here at, here at SEISD. So, um, we're also working with a gentleman, his name's John Tanner, who's, um, used to be a, a guy that wrote tests, and he decided that, um, that's not the way that you need to, uh, recognize students by how they did one day out of the year, and he wrote a book called Test Sense, but he's working with six or eight districts in the state of Texas to help us with our community-based accountability system. And if you have an opportunity to be a part of any of those workshops with him, I would encourage you to do so. Uh, but we're working with other districts to make sure that, um, we know what, um, what success is for our students, and it's, uh, it's measured on any broad number of, of, of levels. You know, we have a, a, um, a learner profile, and a lot of the students that we're recognizing this evening have been part of, um, critical thinking exercises, collaborative, you've got to be collaborative and work with others in order to be recognized. Certainly, you have to be able to communicate, so those are things that are in our, our student profile, our learner profile, and all the students that you're going to see this evening are, are very successful at doing that. So, again, I appreciate y'all being here. It's, it's a great opportunity for us to recognize students and, uh, and, and really recognize the overall success of our district and the things that we're doing, doing right. We, we put a number of major initiatives in place, uh, the first part of this year, and as we move into next year to make sure that our district's doing better on that one test. That's important, you know, we don't want anybody to think it's not important, but, um, we're working towards making sure that, uh, our students are successful in any number of ways. So, again, I appreciate y'all being here. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Crutchfield now.
We are pleased to honor and recognize outstanding SAISD students tonight. We know that participation in extracurricular programs impacts student success. We also know that teachers and directors generously give their time and talent to support our students in extracurricular programs. These educators build great relationships with students and cultivate teamwork within their groups and programs. And as Mr. Lehman mentioned, the SAISD learner profile skills of communicating, collaborating, creating, and thinking flourish in these programs and events. All of these skills help SAISD students excel in becoming future-ready. Thank you families for sharing your talented students with us. It is a privilege to watch them learn and grow. We recognize your important work as your child's first teachers, caregivers, and transportation organizers. We are very proud of your students, and we know you're proud too. Let's begin with our career and technology students. Mrs. Joy Gay, Director of our Career and Technology Program, will share the notable achievements of her students. So, our business professional students, please assemble at the front of the boardroom.
I'll go ahead and start briefly while they're getting lined up. We've been really looking forward to tonight. We appreciate so much the opportunity for you guys to, you, all of you, to meet our students who have not only excelled at regional competitions, but qualified to go to state competitions as well. We do have a couple of teams going to national competitions, and I'll, you'll hear more about those kids as we move through the evening. We had close to 70 students, again, qualify for state competitions. We're very proud, not only of the way they compete, but their behavior while they're out of town representing our district. It was completely exemplary from, from all standpoints. They represented us so, so well, we're so proud of them. We hosted a couple, three of the regional competitions here. We, the Training Center has proven to be, um, a great place to gather four or 500 students with all kinds of specialized equipment. We'll probably be doing that, doing those, hosting those events, probably, uh, for a long, long time, probably as long as, uh, we're willing, because it is such a perfect place. Um, I do want to recognize, I'm not often, I often don't remember to do this, but our business and industry partners who have been so important in helping us not only judge these competitions, but they provide us both paid and unpaid internships for our kids, clinical sites for our students, and we just could not make it without our business and industry and our community partners, and we really appreciate, um, their contributions to making our kids ready for the future. Um, I'm going to let each teacher introduce their students, and again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and thank you for the support that you give us as a, as a group. Thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm Judith Kitchens, and I'm one of the sponsors for BPA at Central High School. Several of our sponsors were not able to make it tonight. Sandy Connolly, Scarlett Rodriguez, Tammy Barnes, uh, so I'm going to be speaking for them, uh, as well. So, I want to start with, like I said, we had several students that competed at the state level, um, and they're, they are involved in other things as well, so they had other commitments and, uh, weren't able to make it. So, first off, we had an administrative support team, and that consisted of Sarah Steen, Chelsea Weldon, Bruseta Garcia, and Sierra Bradley. Uh, we also had, this is on Sandy Connolly's team, Brendan Berger, he competed in banking and finance. Uh, then we had Wyatt Hayes and Kevin Frankie, who were on the economic research team, and then Wyatt Hayes also competed in extemporaneous speech, and he actually made it to finals at the state level. We also had Grace Forsyth, who competed in fundamental desktop publishing, Sierra Bradley in fundamental spreadsheet applications, William Cortez in fundamental word processing, Josh Clayson in intermediate word processing, and Sarah Steen in interview skills, Bruseta Garcia in payroll accounting, and Chelsea Weldon in legal office procedures. Okay, so now for my group. Avery Edinburgh, fundamental word processing, Chloe Edinburgh, fundamental spreadsheet applications, Chelsea Weldon, I already mentioned, legal office, Landry Stone, advanced spreadsheet applications, Alyssa Pacina, advanced word processing, Camden Reed, basic office procedures, Ariana Martinez, advanced office procedures, and also had two students that are going to the national level. We're going to be going to Anaheim, California, May 1st through the 5th, and those are Alana Blackstock in medical office procedures, and Anna James in intermediate word processing. So, very, very proud of these students. And then next, our other two sponsors will introduce their students.
Hello, I'm Randy Hensley, I teach audio/video production at the West Texas Training Center, and I'm also a BPA sponsor. Uh, I have one student here tonight, Maverick Gadberry. Uh, he competed for our chapter in digital media production, placing second at the regional competition here, and although he didn't make the finals at state, I can tell you, he represented our district and our school very, very well. Couldn't be more proud to take a young man like him to, to our contest.
Hello, I'm Chad Wilson, I teach 3D animation and robotics out at the West Texas Training Center. I, I love this job because I get to teach Lakeview and Central, so I bleed two shades of blue, you know? Greatest kids in the district. For BPA, unfortunately, a few of mine aren't here because they're practicing what we learned at their jobs that they're currently working at, so they weren't able to come tonight. But Jackie Miodeski, she took first at region for modeling, and she took fourth at state, so she missed going to nationals by that much, third went to nationals. So, we missed on, out on that one, but she did a great job, very, very competitive competition. As far as the team competition, we had a 3D animation team, Isaac Gonzalez and Chris Schlittler, they couldn't be here tonight, but Emily Berry is here tonight, and very excited about that. This is her first year in 3D animation, and she is your national qualifier, so. We're very proud of all of our BPA students, and that concludes the BPA portion of this event. Thank you so much.
I know they work too hard, so.
Okay. I'd like to thank the board for their support of our students involved in Skills USA. My name is Raymond Banner, I'm the, um, building maintenance teacher at Central High School and a Skills USA sponsor, and, uh, we have a bunch of really good students, so I'm going to go and introduce the ones that I've had. Uh, I have Isaiah Sherman, who was not able to be with us, but he competed at building maintenance at the state level. He won second in district. Um, I have Jesse Garcia, he won first in district, he is also first place in state, and he will be going to nationals in June. I have Eliza, Eliza Munoz, she competed at, at state competition in what we call action skills. It's a really neat competition where she gives a demonstration, and she did that on a smart switch, so really cool stuff. And then I have Caleb Melendez, he won the Best of Texas Scholarship at the Skills USA State Conference. He got to walk the stage at the opening session, and he got a $500 check from the, uh, TIVA Foundation, the Texas Industrial Vocational Association, so.
That was a gift from one of my students. It says, "Because we can never pay you back," from Gabriel. We call him Moose. Okay, um, I'm the construction teacher, um, seems like all of San Angelo gets me. I, I take Central and Lakeview students at West Texas Training Center, and I split campus at Central freshman in the afternoon. Okay, so my students were here, we had, in construction and tools ID, we had, first place in district was Brandon Smith, second place was Andres Martinez, and third place was Jacob Martinez. They went on to compete at state, we don't have those individual results yet. Construction materials ID, first place was Dylan Austin, and Anthony Cortez also went on to state. My teamwork's, my team captain, Gabriel Cardona, we call him Moose. Cash, Cash Connolly, Juan Martinez, and Caesar Saldana represented us beautifully at state. That contest went into a three-day contest in competition, it is just the best that there is, and we represented well. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Travis Dudley, I'm the law enforcement instructor at the West Texas Training Center. Uh, I teach both Lakeview and Central High School students. Back in February, uh, my three right here, Bailey McKenzie, Dorian Madrid, and David Tanguma, they had won first place in District 2 competitions. They had competed in building search, and previously Bailey and Dorian had been to state last year, Bailey in felony traffic stop and Dorian in crime scene. But this year, we had competed in, um, building search, which we won first place and moved on to state. And then we went to Corpus and we competed at, uh, the ABC Center in the Selena Auditorium against 14 other teams. And, uh, all three of these are seniors of mine, and I was very pleased over the last two years with the enthusiasm they had towards my field and industry. And I'm not going to have them anymore, so, you know, I wish them the best of luck, you know, so hopefully you won't see them in the future asking you to sign here. So, but, but thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynette Daniels, I'm the culinary teacher at Lakeview High School. I have Brandon McLester and Leanne Springer, Delilah Reyes and Richard Yamas. These four all made it to state. We started a brand-new program this year. They started the year off by opening boxes and basically putting our kitchen together. So, we did not start off like a typical culinary arts program did. Our competition was also moved back two weeks, so they had less time to prepare. When we walked into our competition, they had no idea who Lakeview High School was, because obviously we had never competed. When we left, we dominated the culinary competition with first and second place. We took first place in restaurant services, we took fourth place in baking. Just to let you know what this competition is at state, the culinary competition is a six-hour competition where you're in a big room, you have to fabricate a chicken, break it down, make two dishes, prepare a chicken consomme. It's a very intense competition, we had to bring all our equipment with us, we were like pack mules rolling into Corpus Christi. These kids have stepped up and they have brought it, they have been in basically every event that we could do in San Angelo this year. You have maybe seen them around town if you've been at some of the events. So, people know who Lakeview Culinary is, who these kids are, I couldn't be more proud of them this year. Thank you.
I'm going to be central culinary in Lakeview and Central Deca. Um, I can if you want.
That's my pal, whenever you need her.
Oh, okay. Do I have a new one?
Surprise.
I got a new one.
All right, my name is Jennifer Urbannick, and I am the marketing and business teacher at Lakeview High School, and I'm so glad Lynette just gave you all the rundown of culinary, because I could not have done that like she did. But I am introducing the culinary students from Central. I do marketing, not culinary, so, that's, these two young ladies over there in the, in their white shirts, they're from Central, um, and they did a fine job at their competition that Ms. Daniels was telling you guys about. Their regional competition was in Odessa, and both of these young ladies advanced to state. Um, the first one is Brianna Molina, and Brianna competed in applied math for culinary management. She placed first place at regionals and got a $3,000 scholarship to Escafee in Austin. And beside her is Esmeralda Lopez, and Esmeralda was in Cupcake Battle, and she got fourth place at regionals, and they're going to be roommates at Escafee in Austin, so they move in in August. There was also a young lady, Olivia Verrett, and she was not able to make it. She was in Serving Up Success, and she got second at regionals as well. So, Central did a really good job at their competition. And I have several students myself for, um, the Lakeview Deca program, and there were kids at the Central Deca, but none of them were able to make it either, because they're working or committed to other stuff, but I'd like to recognize them. Um, first from Lakeview, this is Taylor Spencer, and Taylor had a partner, Noalani Espinosa, and we went to Dallas for our- And we went to Dallas for our state competition. Noa Lani and Taylor, they got first in the integrated marketing campaign. The DECA organization is pretty intense, so they get to write a 30-page paper on an event that they created on their own. So they created a concert for San Angelo students to go to, and it was drug-free, alcohol-free, and they called it, what did y'all call it? Clean Fest. So it was the, for, to help with recycling and things like that. Other students that I had make it to the state competition were Chris Donkinson and Anthony Renfield, and they both scored first in financial services team decision-making. And then Kendall Blue, and he scored first in independent business plan. So they all went to Dallas for the state competition. And then at Central, all of these students also made it to the state level. There was Jansen Curry, who was in sports and entertainment marketing. Flynn McNabb, he was in the hotel and lodging management. And then Coleman White, who was in marketing communications.
And I have to ask this young gentleman, do you like waffles?
Yes, I do, sir.
This is, this is Matthew Shaw, and he's part of a team for the robotics competition. And his team also has Logan Unger and Christian Atkinson. He gets on me if I don't say that right, but it's, okay, close enough. These guys made a waffle maker, and they took first in region for the robotics competition for TCEA. So they are going to state next week in Austin, and we're real excited to spread the waffles from San Angelo all over Austin and take home another trophy. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Heck Knutson from Lakeview High School will recognize the UIL One Act Play students and their achievements.
I'm Heck Knutson, the theater director out at Lakeview, and I have with me today some of our students that won awards at district and then have received some awards afterwards from our production of A Voice of the Prairie this year. We were selected as the alternate to the, by district contests this year, which I was very proud of these kids for about four weeks of rehearsal that we made that honor. So first, I've got Jesse Greer, who was selected to the All-Star Cast. Ian Chapman, who was selected to the Honorable Mention Cast. And then I had Logan Sanders, who's not with us, who was selected as the outstanding technician for the competition. And then on the end, I have Carter Christensen, who's been selected to represent us at the state UIL One Act Play Contest next week as a member of the honor crew. So we'll be going down to do that. And that's me.
At this time, we will recognize UIL academic students, and we'll start off with Mr. Brandon Clark from Lakeview High School.
All right. My name is Brendan Clark. I'm from Lakeview High School. I am the, not the accounting teacher, or, but I'm filling in. So we've got Robert Van Camp here, who got first place at our district meet and went on to compete at the regional level. Unfortunately, didn't get any further, but did really well. We also have two that are not here. We have second place Caleb Calcoat, and then fifth place was Anthony Ranfield.
I am Sherri Kearney. I am the social studies sponsor. My team consisted of Connor Robinson, Noah Arambula, Faith King, and Elena Gregg. The girls were unable to be here tonight, but Elena placed first at district. She went on to regions. Noah placed sixth, and the team placed second.
I'm Miriam Smith, and I coach the ready writing. Kira Oralskieta, she placed second place in district. Y'all watch out for her. She's gonna be a teacher, and so in about three years, watch out for her application. Putting in a word for it.
We'll give her a contract.
She'll be amazing. She, LeAnn's also a graduating senior. She placed third in district. And Rebecca Roy is, she placed fourth. So they did a wonderful job.
I'm back. I also do the current events, and this year I had on my team Connor Robinson, Noah Arambula, Adrian Villa, I almost forgot it there, and Francisco Campo, who couldn't be here. As a team, the guys placed second at district and were the alternate to the regional contest, and Noah placed as the third-place individual for us this year and went on to region.
I'm Sandra Pascal. I teach, uh, coach the math team. Uh, one person who got to advance this year was David Wood in calculator applications. He was placed third.
At this time, we will recognize outstanding students from Central High School, and Mrs. Julie Schneers will share with you their notable achievements.
Hi, my name is Julie Schneers, and I'm the CHS Speech and Debate Coach. And then Mr. Haynes is hanging out down there. I could not keep my sanity or the strength of our team without him. So we're super proud to have this huge group of kiddos that have made some incredible accomplishments this year. We qualified 45 qualifiers to TFA State this year, and that is the biggest state meet in the nation, and so that's a huge accomplishment. We won our region, and we also, I'll just let the kids wave, and we'll just read off all the stuff since they're already all lined up. Ms. Bailey King, who is in the back, she placed third in the state for informative. And then we also had a couple of kids that placed in the top nine at state. We have Alex Fernandez in dramatic interpretation. We have Andrea Mettersefant in program oral interpretation and also in duo with her partner, Everett Bailey. We also have Philip Lupton and Lani McCoy in duet acting. And those who also advanced to the semifinals rounds are Sadie Waldrop in humorous interpretation, Bryce Fant in impromptu speaking, Kenna Willbanks in prose, and Eileen Kent in prose. We also had some quarterfinalists, more breaks at state than we've ever had in the history of the program, and so that was a huge accomplishment that we were very proud of. And Alyssa Van Zant broke to quarterfinals in informative speaking, CJ Banda and Taylor Caldwell in duet acting, Sadie Waldrop and James Bass in duo interpretation, Sam Knox and Emily Kirkendall in duo interpretation, Emily Kirkendall in dramatic interpretation, Gabby Lindsay in poetry, and Maddy Davenport in poetry. And other kiddos who also qualified were Wyatt Hayes, Jaden Fowler, Ali Gutierrez, Aaron Flores, Nina Castro, Hannah Dela Cruz, Kevin Frankie, Davian Garcia, Amani Hussain, Mia Winters, Chris Dunn, Brandon Falcon, Hannah Kim, Brianna Aguilar, Miles Rustworm, Jackson Tim, Payson Epley, Lauren Bass, George Wallace, Micah Golden, Alexis Molina, Gray Shelton, and Haley Ray Leverett. Thank you for letting me announce all the names of the children who are still working jobs tonight. And then I'll just let these kiddos kind of step to the front. How about that? Going to Nationals this summer, we have Gray Shelton in Congress, Wyatt Hayes in Congress, Bailey King and Ali Gutierrez in CX Debate, Payson Epley and George Wallace in public forum debate, Andrea Mettersefant and Everett Bailey in duo, Sadie Waldrop in humorous interpretation, Sam Knox in humorous interpretation, Eileen Kent in program oral interpretation, Alex Fernandez in dramatic interpretation, and Emily Kirkendall in dramatic interpretation. And so then, of course, from TFA and NSDA, and because we're able to do those organizations, we get to go play the UIL game and be as successful as we were this year. We won our region this year, and we have seven different events that we coach in UIL World. In CX Debate, we qualified two teams to UIL CX State. That's Ali Gutierrez and Bailey King, and the team of Hannah Kim and Davian Garcia. And then also for UIL State Congress, we advanced three kids to state, Sam Knox, Gray Shelton, and George Wallace. And then from the kiddos that advanced from district and went to region in persuasive speaking, we had George Wallace and Ali Gutierrez in informative speaking. We had Bryce Fant, Haley Ray Leverett, Hannah Kim in LD Debate. We had Chris Dunn and Bryce Fant. And Bryce Fant, where is he? Bryce, step to the front. Bryce Fant, for the first time in 12 years, because I've been there for 12 years, so I can say that for sure, he won region for LD Debate. So he'll be going to UIL State. And in oral interpretation, which we're missing a few of these kiddos, but in poetry, Everett Bailey won fourth and is the alternate to state. Emily Kirkendall won third, and Andrea Mettersefant won second, and both of those girls will be attending UIL State in May. And then in prose, CJ Banda won seventh, Mia Winters won sixth, and Sadie Waldrop won third. And so we, for the first time in my time, we had all of our interprets in finals for region, and we're taking three of those kiddos to only the top 12 in the entire state, so we're super proud of them. Thank you so much for all of your support in making this happen.
Next, we'll hear from Ms. Laura Smith, and she will share with you information about UIL One Act Play students.
Ms. Schneers and I share something. We share Mr. Haynes. So just like she couldn't do it without him, neither could Wes, so he stretches himself pretty thin. We had UIL district in, at the end of March, and these two young ladies won awards there. Raiden Hicks won Honorable Mention All-Star Cast. Casey Hood won Outstanding Technician. And then Alec Wagner couldn't be with us tonight, but he won Honorable Mention All-Star Cast also. So great group of kids. They had a fantastic show and really worked hard, so I'm really proud of them.
So we're excited to welcome Mr. Kevin McSpadden. He will share information with you about Central's UIL academic teams, and there are, the good news is, there are so many great UIL kiddos that we're going to split them into two groups, because they, we probably all wouldn't fit, so.
We just figured you didn't want them sitting in your laps, so as they make their way up there. I'd like to tell you all a few things about our UIL team, and so as you've probably figured out, our program encompasses, it's a pretty big group effort by a lot of people, so it encompasses points that come in from One Act Play, which is the theater department, points from Speech and Debate, who you just witnessed, and then we have a whole bunch of different events that include nine coaches strictly in the academic. Okay, so y'all see what to do now? All right. So I want to share with you just a couple of things, and then I'll let coaches introduce the individual accomplishments. But our team goes to three practice meets every year, one in the fall, two in the spring. We've brought back hardware, including trophies from each and every one of those. We participate in virtual meets, which we do over the internet against the entire state. These students are consistently in the top 50 in their events, and it's not that rare for us to be in the top 10 in the entire state and especially in 6A. At district this year, the combined efforts of Speech and Debate Theater and your UIL academic teams scored 886 total points. That's 623 total points ahead of the next closest school, and so that by itself is quite an accomplishment and... And that's why this year, we advanced 43 students to the regional meet and had to take two buses, which is a great problem to have. So I'd like to begin by introducing the ones that I coach. And so tonight, in ready writing, you have Chloe Hansen, who was a district champion and advanced to regionals as a freshman. And in spelling, Lexi Valandingham placed third and was a member of a second-place overall team, also advanced to region.
In my current events team, we won first place at district again, which is awesome. And in first place, we had Wyatt Hayes, and second place was, I've lost my place, Ethan Cato. And then also on the team was Maddy Rutherford and Elizabeth Garabey. And then in social studies, and we have to read a book this year, our topic was civil rights, which was interesting. I think we all enjoyed it. Well, yeah, we all enjoyed it. And we came in first again in district, and on that team, Lane Zobel, where's Lane? Lane came in second at district, and Maddy Rutherford came in fourth at district, and then also on the team Wyatt Hayes and Kevin Frankie. Awesome job.
And I coach computer applications, and I'm also gonna announce the accounting team for Mrs. Connolly. So my two kiddos are Cameron Schneider and Chelsea Walden, and they, Cameron placed first at district and Chelsea placed second at district, so that, they were regional qualifiers. This is such a hard, hard event. They're all hard, but I'm just so especially proud of the work that they did. And for UIL accounting, they are the defending district champs. The team members are Sierra Bradley, Ricky Patel... The team members are Sierra Bradley, Ricky Patel, Brisa Garcia, and Diego Resendez. And so like I said, they are first-place team at district in UIL accounting.
I'm Betsy King, and I coached three math events, and all three events did go to regionals. In all three events, we won first place at district. Number sense team consists of Cade Campbell, who also placed first individually, Justin Dela Cruz, Tatiana Webb, and Rocky Ibarra. On the calculator team, we have Cade Campbell, who placed first individually, Justin Dela Cruz, Caleb Perkey, who placed third individually, and Tatiana Webb. The math team is Cade Campbell, who placed first individually, Ian Shipper, Justin Dela Cruz, and Rocky Ibarra.
Okay, I'm Dara Ogie, and I coached the journalism team. And we have five events in journalism, and we had regional qualifiers in all five this year. And we have Riann Manning. She placed in three and competed at regional. She did first place news, second in feature, and second editorial at district. Chloe Sawyer was third in news. Leah Guerrero was third in headlines. And then we had Kylie Corbell, who is not here with us tonight, but she placed second in copy editing and headlines. And overall, they were the first-place team at district.
Hi, my name is Nancy Thompson, and I coached the computer science team. We were first place at district as a team. We had Rocky Ibarra, who was first place individually. Raiden Fleeman was second place individually. Alex Elguizabal was fifth place at district, and Kelsey Gatlin was sixth place at district.
Hello, my name is Courtney Bean, and I am the coach of literary criticism. And so I'm going to make sure that I've got everything here. So on my team, I have Kelsey Gatlin. I have Mary Grace Pigeon, who is not here with us tonight. I have Michael Weigand. I have Justin Dela Cruz. And I have Evangeline Guadamara, who is also not here tonight. In district, Kelsey Gatlin placed first individual. Mary Grace Pigeon, who is not here, placed second individual. Evangeline Guadamara placed sixth individual. And then as a team of Michael, Kelsey, Mary Grace, and Evangeline, we placed first-place team in district. And then when we traveled to region, Kelsey Gatlin placed fourth place in an individual, which made her the first alternate in the region to go to State. And then as a team of Kelsey, Mary Grace, Michael, and Justin, we placed third place.
My name's Carly Stevens, and I am the science coach. And I will tell you guys that we had a lot of firsts this year. First of all, we kicked butt so hard, I sprained my ankle at region. But anyway. So first of all, I want to talk about district. District was amazing because we put Central on the map. Because Arlington Martin and Fort Worth Paschal and everybody else, our district scores beat everybody's. We were third in the state when it came to the district test. Our team was the third highest in the entire state of Texas on that test. So from district, we had first-place team. We had first-place individual, Cade Campbell. And I'm just going to go ahead and tell you the rest of his. First place chemistry, first place physics, and second place biology. A sophomore on my team, and Cade's only a junior, by the way. So we have a young team. Sophomore Carly Curran at district scored first place biology and sixth place overall. Francisco Fuentes, who isn't here tonight, scored second place individual and second-place biology. Jonathan Deanda, who is a junior, placed third individually and second in chemistry. Raiden Fleeman placed fourth individually and second in physics. And Ariane Sheikh, my freshman phenom, scored 10th at district. And we went on to region. When we showed up to region, they were like, "Oh, you guys came?" And I was like, "Yeah, we came." So, region, we set records. It is the first time that we have been regional runner-up team in the history of Central. We scored 504 points. The first-place team scored 524 points. That's less than three questions out of 180 possible questions that divided us. So, Cade Campbell, the first person in the history of Central High School to score regional champion first place overall science. Cade Campbell, the first person in the history of Central to place champion in chemistry. And he's the second person to place champion in physics, only behind his older brother, And then finally, we swept every individual gold medal, because we had first-place biology too. Carly Curran, my sophomore, placed first-place biology. So we are going to State with two people this year and an alternate team.
Okay, that concludes tonight's recognitions. I think that was pretty awesome. Good luck topping that.
Thanks, Ms. Crutchfield. We appreciate that. Okay, yeah, we're going to take a short break, and then we'll continue. So we'll take a short restroom break, and then we'll continue. Okay, we'll go back into our meeting and regular session. Item five is public comments. Anyone wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening? Anyone wishing to do so? I see no one coming forward, so we'll move to item six is the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes? We have a motion for Mr. Dendron and a second for Mr. Gallegos to approve the minutes of our March 18, 2019 training session, our March 18, 2019 special finance and pre-agenda workshop, and our March 25, 2019 regular board meeting. Are there any questions or comments from our board team concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is the report section of our agenda. Item seven A is student enrollment report for the 28th Monday of school, March 25, 2019. That was provided to our board team as part of our Friday fax. Item B is 2018-2019 four-six weeks average daily attendance report. That's also been provided. Both of those are, we've been running about just slightly less than 100 students versus what we had last year in the district. Although here recently, we were as low as about 35 less than what we had this time last year. But I think the most recent report was 90, maybe? Yeah. Oh, thank you. So this one is 38, but the one we got last week's back in the 90s again. So this is, the one we got last week's more current than this. And then our average daily attendance is really similar to where we were last year. Partnership with, item C, do we have anything on our partnership with Goodfellow? Okay, thank you. And I think Dr. Ritter has something for academic update and academic progress. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Dr. Detloff wanted to say something.
Dr. Ritter and Mr. Lehman, I was going to use this opportunity to comment on our updated mission statement. As you can see across the boardroom from Dr. Ritter, we have our mission statement, our vision statement, and our board goals. These were updated as a result of our strategic planning initiative. So these are updated goals, and we will continue. And I think to kind of frame Dr. Ritter's remarks this evening, you'll see that her remarks and her academic update will be based around what are we doing to provide and engage students in inspiring and relevant education, really, to make sure that they are future-ready graduates. So I think those visions, the mission, and our board goals will provide the perfect frame for Dr. Ritter's comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Detloff, and Mr. Lehman, members of the board. I think, first of all, just it's perfect timing with all of the recognition tonight of our students in academic UIL and other events that they are just excelling in. We are so very, very proud of our students, and we know that the efforts that we are seeing across the district results in these kinds of experiences for our students, right in line with our learner profile, our mission. We're excited to now share with you, moving into with middle schools. I've asked Dr. Farah Gomez to come, and she has some folks here. We're going to highlight our middle schools. We have middle school UIL. We wanted to update you on also with a success academy at Lincoln Middle School. And also to highlight the STEM academy and those labs that we highlighted that we will be implementing at Lincoln Middle School next school year. So with more information on those, here is Dr. Gomez.
As I was trying to get Matt Askew to come up here as well. So these are definitely the efforts of many. We have Shelley Huddleston as well, and a lot of folks in the audience that we're going to recognize as we go through the evening. So as Dr. Ritter said, we have a lot of information to share with you with middle school this evening. We're going to start first with our middle school academic UIL meet. We just held the second annual meet April 6, and it was really timely as we recognized our Central High School and our Lakeview High School students. But we also recognized the efforts that have been put in place for our middle schools. So we had approximately 105 middle schoolers participate in eight different events. This year, we did add number sense. Last year, when we began the program, we started off with math, modern oratory, spelling, science, social studies, ready writing, and oral reading. And then again, added number sense this year. Really trying to create a district-wide culture of academic excellence, not about competing among the three middle schools, but holding up excellence for all of our secondary students. And all three schools were very well represented with top-scoring students. So just a couple of pictures here to share with you, again, supporting that district-wide culture of academic success, where students and teachers were all supportive of one another, regardless of the middle school they attended. We have a short little video here just to show you how they all held each other up and celebrated their success. It kind of just captures that team spirit among all three schools. Maybe we'll try again.
And in first place, Navia Hernandez.
So again, in the middle school UIL academic meet, it wasn't about a big team ranking announcement there at the competition. But if you could recognize that voice in the background, Kevin McSpadden from Central High School really takes the lead in overseeing the competition for the three middle schools. And so that was Kevin in the background, just announcing all of their successes. And then each of the three middle schools have their own on-campus celebration for their students' achievements. Also, we'd like to recognize Julie Sneers, as she was instrumental in helping us coordinate with all three middle schools as well. So just a short update in terms of middle school UIL academics. And now we'll move on to our Lincoln Saturday Success Academy. We have a lot of people in the audience that we would like to introduce to you. So sorry, guys, you won't have to stand up and tell a short story about yourself, but we would like for you to stand, please. We'll start off with Mrs. Diego, current principal at Lincoln Middle School. We have Mr. Joe Gandar, who will be the principal at Lincoln Middle School next year. And we have Mrs. Marissa Guerrero, who will be the associate principal at Lincoln Middle School. Okay? Thank you. Then we have a number of teachers who are working the Saturday Success Academy for us. They couldn't all be here this evening, but these teachers are all skillful educators, and we're very blessed to have their gifts and talents working with our students in the Saturday Academy. So we have Ms. Leslie Taylor from Bradford Elementary. We have Ms. Sylvia Rodriguez from Reagan Elementary. We have Ms. Lynn Brooks from CFC. We have Ms. Kim Elkins, who is instructional coach at Lincoln Middle School. Mr. Dennis Padilla, assistant principal at Lincoln Middle School. Ms. Latonia Sutton, assistant principal at Lincoln Middle School. We have Ms. Yvonne Buchenlinger. I never say it right, Yvonne. I practice and everything. Yvonne is a teacher for us at Carver, and she will be moving to be a counselor for us at Lincoln Middle School next school year. Okay? You guys will sit just so I can see behind you really quick. And we have Ms. Katie Rudolph, instructional coach at Lincoln Middle School. Ms. Eloisa Griffin, teacher at Lincoln Middle School. Did I miss anyone that's here for the Saturday Academy? So will y'all join me in just giving them a round of applause? For our Lincoln Saturday Success Academy, we have an intense focus on reading. We also are doing a special math group with a group of sixth graders. We've had up to 133 students attend on a Saturday session. We have five sessions. The first one, excuse me, began March 23, and those will run through the end of April. The only Saturday we aren't meeting is this upcoming Saturday due to the holiday. Students attend from 9 to 12. If they're normally bus-eligible students, we're providing bus transportation. And we're also providing all students with lunch before they leave us for the day. We have several pictures that we could choose to share with you guys, so it was hard to just capture a few. But we have some pictures here where we want to show you examples of how teachers are intentionally designing engaging lessons and experiences where students can build strong literacy and math skills while also being communicators, collaborators, critical thinkers, and creators. Again, that common thread that you've heard throughout the course of the evening when Mrs. Crutchfield introduced the UIL academic students and as Dr. Ritter and Dr. Detloff shared with our vision and mission statement of SAISD, meeting those conditions for the learner profile. Oh, I think, sorry, you're driving great, Matt. I missed one. So in this slide, we have an example for you. Technology is a key component where students are challenged to be creators of products which demonstrate their new learning versus simply consumers of technology and computer programs. So these students aren't coming on a Saturday just sitting in front of a computer program, working on reading math skills. These teachers are engaging intentional lessons where they're having to be creators to demonstrate their new learning. Students are working weekly to meet their learning goals and move forward in their learning continuum. And in the last slide, we have for you two videos. The video on the left, we're having some technical difficulties with The video on the left, we're having some technical difficulties with sound, but as Matt, who does have a math background, reminded me, that video demonstrated mental math. Now, part of the beauty in that video is students have to orally tell you their thinking as they solve the problem, so you'll kind of miss that part. And then in the closing video, at the end of each session, these teachers and students celebrate before they launch for the day that they're crushing their goals and going above and beyond their peers and coming in for additional time on Saturdays. So we'll show you those two short videos.
Made out.
Eight times four is 32, and then 32 minus... Or eight times one is eight, and then 32 minus eight is 124.
Good.
So when I introduced Yvonne earlier, I failed to tell you that she's also known as DJ Marshmello. So that was her with a box over her head. So again, a great big round of applause for all of these teachers for sharing. So next for the academic update this evening, we have further information for you about the Career and STEM Labs at Lincoln Middle School. And so we'll go back and forth, Matt, and I'll be happy to drive and happy to talk. But we wanted to give you guys more information this evening about the Paxton Patterson Labs.
Talking. So Paxton Patterson is an educational company from the 1920s. They've been in service for almost 100 years now. They create learning systems that engage students with problem-solving and real-world technology. And currently, right now, there are 91 labs in 42 districts in Texas, but there are 660 labs across the nation so far. Okay, with these labs, instead of students just sitting there, hearing information, showing what they know, it's all hands-on. They're given a situation, a problem, they have to create a solution, test that solution out, and then see if it works. And if it doesn't, they go back to the drawing board and start all over again until they get something that ends up working out in the end. And the teacher is just there as a facilitator the majority of the time. And this is a video just to kind of show y'all what the labs look like once they'll be installed at Lincoln.
They have these internship experiences, or they have these work-based learning experiences that are connected to the textbook and academic piece that they're taking, and now they have actual hands-on experience.
It's been a win-win for not only us here and the labs and the Action Lab, but also in the classrooms, especially what they're reading and they're writing.
With this class, it's more activities and more things for the students to do and learn.
And then we have another driving block, and this one is on, and then this one is Right now, we just finished breaking structures, and we were testing it to see the strength of them.
What we have so far is we are doing a Movie Storm movie for our module, and so far, we have two characters.
You know, what we have seen from the Action Labs and communication with the high school district, it's been shared with us that the students that come to their schools that have gone through the Action Labs come into their schools with the ability to think quicker, to solve those problems, to engage in conversations about the content.
Most content courses have a bellwork activity, and I've skipped right over that because they jump right in. And if I need their attention to make other announcements, I usually have to peel them back from having jumped in already. It's just hard to stop them. Once they get started on a day-to-day basis, sometimes it's hard to get them to clean up and get ready to leave.
If they could have a choice, they probably would stay in here the whole entire year. You can't walk in here a day where students aren't stepping in and sitting down and starting working.
So here at our module, we do a lot with the manufacturing technologies. So how does manufacturing work in the real world?
Okay, this is how I have a problem. This is how I'll go about solving it.
Because they learn to use their hands in the different ways of thinking other than just textbook and paper.
We use the programs that they use in college.
The whole goal is that they'll have so many opportunities to see things they've never seen before, and that's what STEM offers, is a chance for them to see in a classroom situation, but yet in something a classroom wouldn't necessarily offer in a traditional-type setting.
Being on a flight simulator or building a bridge and being able to use their hands, they had not had those experiences before. So I was able to see the very intense connections for students to get them excited about their future.
I want to be a mechanical engineer where in I grew up, or you get a student that'll say that she wants to be a biomedical engineer. And these are words that weren't even in their vocabulary before they started taking the STEM lab classes.
So that was just kind of a video of what the STEM Labs look like in a classroom every day. We got the privilege of going to Richardson Middle School probably two weeks ago to actually experience the lab in person. And I didn't... I mean, you see the video, and you hear the people talk, and then you're like, well, that's a great sales pitch. And that's what you normally think lots of times. But when we walked in, we walked in probably five minutes into class, and every kid was working, and I kind of thought, oh, well, this is her good class. This is her first period. And then between first and second period, we were talking to her, and the tardy bell rang. Not a single kid asked a question. Ten minutes in, we were still talking to her, and she goes, oh, excuse me, hold on, I need to check roll. And we turned around, and every single kid was working. No one was off task. No one was waiting for her. They jumped right in and started, and it was amazing to see middle school kids do that. So it was a very cool experience to do that. With the two labs that we're going to do at Lincoln, there'll be one that's college and career-ready lab. It will have 16 modules. Here are the 16 modules, so you can just kind of see what the modules will look like as we go through. And a lot of them will lead into our CTE programs for high school. It gives the kids a chance to determine what they really like, what they want to do. So they begin to high school, they're not randomly choosing what they think they want to do, and six weeks in, they're like, I hate this class. It gives them the opportunity in two-to-three-week blocks to decide which path they kind of want to go. And then the other one will be our Applied Engineering Lab or our STEM Lab, and these will be the 16 modules we offer within the class. Every module's done in groups of two to three, depending on your students in the class. They're two to three weeks long, and then they switch to the next module. So they're constantly working on something new every two to three weeks. And then we have the two teachers at Lincoln who will be teaching these next year for career pathways. We have Stephanie Sewell. And then for Applied Engineering, we have Danny Eckert.
So I'll just add, as Matt said, with Stephanie and Danny, these are both very successful educators, and we're very fortunate to have them helping us build this program and create these conditions for our student. So that concludes what we have for you this evening for our middle school academic update. Are there any questions that we can help answer?
Last week, we talked about the kids getting into the STEM program at Lincoln. Everyone, how are we identifying those kids?
That's a great question. So we have several different ways of identifying. For the two labs that we discussed with you this evening, those will be specific to eighth graders. So Matt and Shelley Huddleston, Kim Elkins, Mr. Eckert, Ms. Sewell, along with several other administrators at Lincoln, they're having conversations with students. They're going to do a STEM fair to show students some of the other things. Sometimes students, when you hear the word STEM, they think either robotics or drones and don't realize all the things that can come with those pathways. And then we're having two special parent sessions to communicate this opportunity with parents. We're having a morning session, if that's better for parents, and we're having an evening session. And all of that is taking place now, so by mid-May, we can help make those course selections for students that are interested.
Dr. Gomez, just one commentary. There's a teacher, particular teacher at Lincoln that really helped my kids come through school, Mr. Eckert. We won't say his name out loud, but he was instrumental in helping me raise my kids as they came through Lincoln. So thank you, Mr. Eckert. Good to see you still there.
One thing we did not discuss that we need to also add, the Applied Engineering course that Mr. Eckert will be teaching will count as a high school credit for those students. Thank you.
Dr. Gomez, I'm going to add one quick comment. I believe I alluded to this in our pre-agenda meeting, but also, we had multiple discussions with leadership of Goodfellow Air Force Base earlier in the fall about STEM initiatives that we could implement district-wide. And so I just applaud your team and group for taking this commitment and taking action on it. So I want to thank you for that. And also, I do want to recognize the teachers, the classroom teachers, that are in our boardroom this evening, because that is where it happens. So, you know, assessment is understanding, and they do that daily, and they have taught thousands and thousands of kids to be successful citizens with an academic base, but we know that that learner profile is critical, and what we're doing tonight, it just makes us so proud. So the classroom teachers is here. I would put any one of my children in your room at any time.
I didn't point this out when we were looking at the pictures, but on the front slide, last Saturday, we had some bad weather, and so students are in class from 9:00 to 12:00, but when it started, there was no electricity. Now, I also want to commend Mr. Creek and his team because they were on it with AEP, but those teachers were there, come light or dark, to teach those kids. So again, a testimony to their commitment and service.
So just a thank you again to all of you here tonight, because we know that all of these programs would not be in existence and be successful if it were not for you. And also, for the school board, thank you for your support in these endeavors. We're excited to continue to bring to you how our kids are experiencing success in San Angel ISD. And again, the adults and the support here and the commitment of our teachers and administrators is just like none I've ever seen. So we're very, very proud of these folks and of our students also. Thank you all.
Yeah, wow. I feel so excited about, you know, what we're providing for our students, and thanks again, just like Dr. Detloff said, to everyone involved in the program. I thank y'all for y'all's commitment, and we're excited to see what results will come out of that commitment. So certainly, we haven't... It sounds like we've got a lot of students that are excited about it as well. Our final report is E. in our Report Section, which is required hours of continuing education for board members. I'm supposed to be the presenter of that, so I'll tell you that board members, new members, which we don't have any new members, are required to have 16 hours of board training, while experienced members are required to have eight. And I'll give you that list of our board team and let you know how many hours we currently have. So Mr. Nindl has 16 and 1/2 hours. Mr. Gallegos has 14 hours. Mr. Hernandez has 12 hours. Mr. Kingman has 15 and 1/2 hours. Ms. Mizel Flint has 24 and 1/2 hours. And Mr. Parker has 18 hours. And Mr. Lehman has 15 and 1/2 hours. No, excuse me, 13 hours. So you gave Amy 70 of your hours. So we certainly met the requirement for training, and I'm proud of our board team for lots of the trainings that are open to our board team. We attend in force, as well as a number of our administrators take part in that training as well. So that's my report. Let's move to item 8, which is Consent Items A. through E. Do we have a motion to approve our consent items?
Move to... Excuse me. Move to approve Consent Items A. through E.
So we have a motion from Mr. Parker, and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve our Consent Items A. through E. Consent. Item A is Consider Donations. I think I had a note here. I wanted to make special thanks to Ricky Black, who for Def Olympics, I think every year, she raises an incredible amount of money for that. This year, she raised $2,355 for that. So we are certainly appreciative of our principal at Lee Middle School, but many others in our community who support that. So that's item A, Consider Donations. Item B is Consider Approval of Our Quarterly Investment Report, ending February 28 of 19. Item C is Consider Presiding Judges and Alternates for Our Coming Election on May 4. Item D is To Consider Superintendent's Recommendations, 2019-2020 Teacher and Other Professional Contracts under Texas Government Code 551074. And item E is To Consider Tasby Board Policy Update 112. So are there any questions or concerns, or anyone like to pull any of those items and vote on those individually? If not, any public comment concerning our Consent Items A. through E. All in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is Item 9, To Consider Bills, Accounts, and Financial Statements for Both the Month of February 2019 and March 2019. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Nindl, and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our Bills, Accounts, and Financial Statements for both February and March of 2019. Do we have any board comments or questions concerning those reports?
Mr. Lehman, just to note to the public watching on Channel 4, that all of these reports were reviewed at our pre-agenda meeting last week, and all these reports can be found online on our website, saisd.org, under the District tab, under Fiscal Responsibility, I believe. So anyway, thank you. Transparency, my bad. Thank you. Thank you, Gerard.
Thanks, Mr. Nindl. Any other comments or questions concerning our Bills, Accounts, and Financial Statements? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is To Consider the Proposed Amendment for the District's Official Budget in our General Fund. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval?
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Nindl, and a second from Mr. Parker to approve the proposed amendment to the District's Official Budget. This is changes to function codes and no monetary differences in this amendment. Do we have any board questions or comments concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is To Consider SAISD's Early Head Start and Head Start Self-Assessment Goals and Objectives, and Ms. Taunton is here to review that with us. Thank you. Thanks, Rachel, for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Up for approval is the self-assessment for SAISD Head Start and Early Head Start. This is an annual assessment that we have to do, and we start in January and we end in March. And it's approximately 3/4 of the way through the program to ensure the timely completion of the assessment and the development of the program improvement plan. The self-assessment team was comprised of management, staff, policy committee representatives, parents, and external community members. The program assessment looks at the program's entire operations, and the results are used for continuous improvement and planning. You have before you the identified strengths and the areas of concern that we do determine and make into goals for the next year. The three areas of identified strengths are program governance, program operations, and management, excuse me, financial and administrative requirements. And under each of those sections, there are subparts that are all of our components that we cover in the Head Start program. The areas that we identified as strengths are also listed. And then areas of improvement that we felt were required are to continue our CLASS, which is the classroom observation tool that's used to monitor and provide feedback for the teaching staff. So we do that as part of monitoring developmentally appropriate practices, social, emotional development, instructional practices, language communication, well-planned lessons in a safe and secure environment, and we do provide mentoring and coaching for our staff. The other area is to continue to increase our enrollment of children with disabilities. We have to meet a 10% required enrollment of children with disabilities for the program. And... And every year, we, for the last three years, we have struggled to meet our 10%. And it's usually because of, once a child is identified as having a learning disability, parents give permission for us to do assessments and evaluations along with the district's special ed program. Once they're identified, sometimes the parents will deny services, they want to wait till they're in elementary and not start so early. And so, those are some of the areas that we have found that we struggle in meeting our requirement, and also, a lot of them are over income. And we're not allowed to enroll over income when we have income-eligible children. So those are the two areas that are in the plan.
Thanks, Ms. Taunton. Any questions or comments concerning our Head Start and Early Head Start self-assessment goals and objectives? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the 2019 self-assessment goals and objectives.
So we have a motion from Mr. Hernandez and a second from Dr. Kingman. Are there other questions or comments concerning our goals? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 12, to consider CW local, which is part of our local board policy, and Ms. Hollihan's gonna help us with that. Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you, sir. This is the first of two discussions to consider CW local policy, which is naming a facility. As we went through our policy updates, there were policies that you all have already addressed, and this one was one that we had not addressed yet, so we are in the process of revising it. In Friday Facts, I sent you a copy of what the recommendation would be. We've already changed that, so you have another one. I put another one before the board meeting by your, at your site. I will tell you that the words that are in blue, that was our old policy, that was in our CW local already. I think what's important is the criteria for name selection, we didn't have that in there. And what we did was, we asked Tasby to send us several policies, local policies that they had. And then we also reviewed several of other districts' policies, just to kind of get an idea of, okay, so how much detail do we want to go in here? You'll see under criteria for naming a selection, or a campus, I'm sorry, it's local geographical names related to a particular area where school and facilities will be erected, name of a historical significance to the geographical area, to local, state, or historical, national, I'm sorry, historic events, names that describe the program housed in the facility, or describe the function that will be in the facility, and retired distinguished educators from the district who have given permission for consideration of naming or renaming a facility or portion of a faculty facility in their name, and so on. We also put in here about existing facilities, recommendation process, the recommendation process for programmatic renaming, and then board decision. I know that Mr. Kingman already told me I had a typo in there, thank you. And so if you see anything else, please, please, please let me know. I don't want to necessarily read all this to you, but if you have questions, I know it didn't change much. There was some wording that I sent in Friday Facts that I felt was awkward, and so we tried to readjust those. Again, remember, you're not voting on this policy tonight. What will happen is, it really is just discussion, and then as we go into next month, we will look at you all approving it. So questions?
Any questions, Dr. Kingman?
So on criteria for name selection four?
Yes, sir.
The idea of one, so people who are still living, giving permission?
Yes, sir.
Would that be thought out prior to anyone?
The naming? I would think so, yes, sir. That would be my recommendation, but...
Before someone's given their permission, basically?
Would it come to the board before someone has given their permission? I would say no. But we'll listen to your advice.
Suppose that retired person is deceased, how are they gonna get permission?
I think we could do family. Because we did talk about that today. I need to write that down, I'm sorry.
I believe, Ms. Hollihan, on that criteria, if the last sentence may help us with that, the name shall fall within at least one of the following categories. So I don't think you have to meet, obviously, all of these categories.
That's correct. You do not.
So we could put something in there specifically about deceased educator or someone that has significance to San Angelo.
Okay, I will put that on there.
And that was my second question, someone has significance to San Angelo, because I don't see anything, suppose San Angelo has a Congressional Medal of Honor winner, I don't know where that would fall in, or...
Would it be names of historical significance to the geographical area, or to local historic events?
I think it needs to be reworded, because I don't, when I read it initially, I said, I don't know if that fits or not.
So say that one more time for me, then, please.
Well, I haven't, I'm not giving you the wording for it. I'm just saying, do we have a category that would fit for someone that was not, the last one, number four is the only one that appears to me that applies to an individual, someone distinguished individual or something, and it's just listed as distinguished educator.
Okay, I got you.
So I'm talking about...
Citizen?
It could be a citizen, or...
A figure, historical or significant figure.
Someone to the community, yes. I mean, it could be a civic leader, it could be, as I said, someone that won Congressional Medal of Honor, or maybe we have someone that was high in politics or something we were proud of, you know, I don't know. I'm just, right now, it appears to be limited to distinguished educators, and most of the buildings we have up there now are not named for distinguished educators.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
But I do think rewriting that, we want to make sure that it's retired distinguished educators, right? Just when we are rewriting that, I think the retired part is important to keep in there.
Good, any other questions or comments, Dr. Deloff?
Yes, Mr. Lehman, I just want to thank Ms. Hollihan. I know she scanned numerous documents across the state and board policies, and visited with attorneys also to really gather the best subset of opportunities in naming for San Angelo. So I appreciate her doing that, and I think with your input, we'll craft a policy that will take us into the future and be able to honor any individual or historical namesake that we feel would benefit San Angelo.
What I will try to do is put in those suggestions and make sure that you have it in Friday Facts again, probably by the end of this week, so that if it's not worded correctly, or that you can say, that's not exactly what I meant. Again, we'll send it to Tasby to review, and they'll send it to their legal also to say, yes, this is good, or no, this isn't. So let's get the wording kind of like we want, and then the following week, we'll send it to Tasby, and we'll go from there. So if you have any other questions, please email me or call me, okay?
So we can discuss it at our, this at our pre-agenda workshop in May?
Yes, sir.
And then approve it in our regular meeting in May?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any issues with timeline, or feel good about where we're headed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Shelley. All right, that, I'll make the announcements. We're having district celebration, May 3, at 9:00 a.m. at San Angelo Stadium. We also have a financing pre-agenda workshop on May 13. Our regular board meeting in May is May 20. Our PACE graduation is May 29, at the McNeese Convention Center. And then our Central High School graduation is June 1, at 10:00 a.m. at the Janelle Center. And our Lakeview High School graduation is also June 1, at 4:00 p.m. at the Foster Communications Coliseum. So I think that covers all of our announcements. Does anybody have anything they want to add to our future agenda? We are gonna go into closed session to discuss personnel matters under Texas Government Code 551, subchapters D and E, in particular, 551074, which allows us to discuss personnel matters. So we'll do that, and then we'll be back. Okay, we're back in regular session, and we took no official action and certainly didn't take any votes while we were in closed session. We've already covered all of our announcements. Appreciate everyone's, everyone being here this evening, and hearing no objection, we'll stand adjourned.